Good evening. It is Monday, October 7, 2024. I'm going to call to order the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'll record the attendance. All members are present with the exception of Member Moxley, who is excused, and Member Trustee Nordhuck. And with that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I need to accept a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Do we have support?
We'll support.
Thank you, Member Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That moves us on to disclosure of any conflicts of interest.
Mr. Chair, I would, I don't know that it's a conflict of interest, but I have done business with Mr. Schrader for many years and his father before him. So I just thought I would disclose that I also own a golf cart.
Thank you for disclosure.
He doesn't owe me money. It's important.
Okay, all right. Anybody having?
As long as we're being facetious about conflicts of interest, I think I own a battery facility per our current definition. Okay, but I'm hoping we're going to change that definition a little bit.
Well, we haven't adopted it yet, so. I think you're in the clear for the moment. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to mention? Hearing none, I will move on to ask for an approval of the minutes from September 16, 2024.
So moved. I have two small technical errors. I will say the meeting minutes look fantastic. I was not here, so I read them to get caught up very thorough. I found two minor things on the bottom of packet page four. Item number six. Street with relation to retaining wall and grading between the properties to the neighbor's liking within reason. It says withing or withing. Just take the G off. Very minor. And then on the next page, packet page five. The second paragraph of text, the second line. The first presence of the word was, you can just strike was and everything else looks perfect.
Did I hear a motion? Was that a motion, Member Bruno, with those corrections?
With those corrections.
I'll amend my motion to include those corrections.
All right.
I'll support.
Okay, so Member Nordic has made the motion. Member Bruno with the corrections has supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. At this time, we'll acknowledge any visitors or those wishing to speak on really any item on the agenda, except I guess Article nine has a public hearing. So if you'd like to speak specifically to Article nine, which is the renewable energy ordinance, we'll give you an opportunity at that time. In the meantime, unless you're an applicant, feel free to to make a comment. Those on Zoom, you can raise your hand or press star nine if you're on a touchstone phone. I'll limit comments to five minutes. We have somebody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll move on. With no hands raised, that puts us to Article seven. Oh, I guess that sounds also a public hearing. I take that back. But that's for Cascade Carts LLC.
Hi, Danielle.
Wow, nice to see you guys.
Well.
Okay, so the request tonight is for special land use approval for Cascade Carts LLC on behalf of Scott Schrader, who is the property owner, to sell and store golf carts on a site with a current principal use, which is O'Neill's Body Shop located at 2756 Craft Avenue. The applicant intends to stall, intends to store four golf carts on site outdoors adjacent to Craft Avenue. When the shop is closed, all golf carts will be stored inside. There will be no indoor display of golf carts. It should be noted that the current zoning ordinance does not specifically regulate golf carts, nor does it define vehicle or automobile. So the closest definition we could find for this regulation purpose was recreational vehicle. And to that point, recreational vehicles, the sales and service is permitted by special land use in the B2 district. So the way that staff has interpreted this request is an accessory use for the current use on site with special land use approval for the sales and recreational vehicle sales and service. As previously stated, the existing zoning is B2 general business. The site is generally located between, at the corner of Craft and 28th Street, north of 28th Street, just south of the Goodwill Store and West of Gordon Food Service Stores. The site is approximately 1.1 acres in size. In general, the case background, I've already noted that Cascade Carts would like to display up to four golf carts in the front parking lot and as many as six on site at all times, which means four would be displayed in the parking area. However, it should be noted that the accompanying site plan includes 14 in total parking spaces that have been highlighted on the plans. And I would just defer to the applicant to specify the, the locations for which the golf carts will be parked outdoors, as in because there will not be 14 total carts on site. And I didn't want to assume, you know, where these, where they would be located specifically. But one could look at the site plan and kind of deduce that it's within that highlighted 14 space area. Further, the Auto Body Shop intends to continue operating under current conditions, open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday. The shop is not intended to be open on weekends, but in the event it is, it is by appointment only. I will also defer to the applicant to clarify the intended hours of operation for the sale of golf carts. If that will run the same as, as the O'Neill's Body Shop, hours of operation, eight to five Monday through Friday. Section 17.06 of your zoning ordinance outlines special land use approval criteria and standards. The first of which is to be designed, constructed, operated, maintained as to be harmonious and appropriate within appearance and existing or intended character. Staff's findings in, in the proposal as submitted did not include any major concern with regard to the changing of character. 28th Street and Craft, as we all know, is very auto oriented in use. There's high traffic volumes. The visibility would likely not be impacted on Craft Avenue or 28th Street from the outdoor storage of up to four carts. Therefore, it's not likely that the proposed use will affect the overall appearance and character of the area. Criteria number two, adequately served by essential services and essential facilities. The sale and storage of golf carts is not intended to require any additional emergency services or utilities to, that already exist on site, will not affect any current drainage patterns or require any additional refuse disposal. Therefore, staff did not find any, any concerns with this regard. Criteria three relates to not creating excessive additional requirements at public cost for facilities. Again, given that there are no additional facilities proposed on site, this is just outdoor storage essentially of, of recreational vehicles, that it's not likely that additional facilities would be required at this point. Especially not at that, not to a public additional cost. With regard to traffic congestion, criteria number four. The site will be accessed and is currently accessed from Craft Avenue, which includes four travel lanes and a middle turn lane. It is not anticipated that the proposed use will affect existing traffic patterns, given the high, the high volume of traffic. It's a county road, so forth, so forth. As such, again, it is not likely that traffic patterns would be affected as the proposed use. Criteria number five, including not involving uses, activities, processes, materials, equipments, so forth, so forth, that would be detrimental to any persons or quality of life. The proposed golf carts have already been manufactured and assembled and will be delivered on site as such. It is not anticipated that the use will involve activities, materials, or other conditions that would be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. However, it should be noted that I would also defer to the applicant per the planning commission's deliberation to discuss of the intended frequency for golf cart drop offs. What does that look like? What does that unloading and unloading frequency look like? What are the hours of loading and unloading, just to ensure that there's not going to be any congestion that would occur? You know, with a, with a large trailer dropping off golf carts at a single time. So we defer to the applicant to provide more details to confirm the transport, loading, unloading, and associated activities pertaining to the golf carts on site. Criteria number six includes all applicable federal, state, local licensing regulations shall be complied with, annual proof and so forth. It has been noted that the golf carts are classified as a vehicle per the state of Michigan, the State of Michigan Vehicle Code. So we note that should an approval occur this evening, that the applicant should be required to submit proof of the state license for selling golf cart vehicles. Another applicable documentation. So to my knowledge, oftentimes the state won't offer that license until local approval is first achieved. So it's kind of the, the chicken or the egg situation a little bit there, but should the planning commission approve this proposal this evening, that I would recommend that being a condition of approval, that that license is then submitted for file. And then lastly, dimensional standards with regard to landscape buffering, parking regulations, and otherwise applicable use for zoning district is all complied with. Given that the proposed use is not including any new buildings, any new structures, no construction of, of any, so to speak of, all the existing setbacks, buffers, landscaping requirements, they all, they all stand. However, it was at the time of, of, of the time that this memorandum was written or that the staff report was written, that the, the parking lot appeared to be in kind of a state of disrepair with no clear parking striping to be delineated. So we would also note that too, that, that restripe, that the applicant should restripe the parking lot to clearly define where these parking spaces are going to go for both vehicles and golf carts. However, it was observed that I believe the parking lot has recently since been resurfaced, perhaps within the last few days. So I'll let the applicant kind of speak to that a little bit more as well. And then some other general considerations that don't really relate to these, these seven items on this table on page three of your memo for the planning commission to consider and discuss include that no interior building changes are intended at this time. If interior building, our interior changes are proposed, they will have to come back for staff approval. Golf carts will not, will be delivered by truck and trailer again. So kind of speaking to that frequency and, and what that plan looks like for, for the drop off to ensure that there's no congestion. No, there will be no additional employees planned at this time as a result of the golf cart use, sales and storage use. And then lastly, the applicant again is in process obtaining that state license. Any questions for me at this time?
Member Bruno?
I have a couple with, in regard to your table. So number four was not cause traffic congestion, conflict of movement. Has there been any talk about where they're going to test drive, like usually with the golf carts, when it jumps in and takes it for a test drive? Which leads me to the next point of are these roadworthy? I have more familiarity with golf carts in Florida than I do in Michigan. So I don't know if these are even allowed to be on public streets. So my, my concern would be that's a very accident prone corner, corner. And asked for a report from the township on heat maps. So I guess it's something we're working on. But I know when the airport presented their heat map of accidents areas, that was a strong one, being right there on the corners. I'm just wondering, do you know anything about that?
So I believe at the time, the applicant did submit specs of which the golf carts that they would be selling, like you just kind of your average, like four to six seater type of what you would see typically in Michigan. However, I will kind of let them speak to that a little bit more on what that sales process looks like. And I, I think hopefully that will help kind of offer some clarity.
They have a pretty big site there.
Yeah, and.
Keep it on site, I think.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine that they could, given that it's our, you know, it's over an acre in size.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for Danielle?
Mr. Chair, Danielle, the license that you spoke of, is that a separate license than a license to sell vehicles?
So I'm to understand that it's one of the same because that falls under the State of Michigan Vehicle Code.
If Mr. Schrader was able to produce his license to sell vehicles, that would, that would fulfill that requirement for you?
I have to understand it likely like that both of those are the same. However, I'll also let the applicant speak to that as that they're already in the process and engaged with the state.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Then at this time, I would invite the applicant forward. If you can answer some of these additional questions, if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Schrader, representing Cascade Carts.
Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Basically, I think there are just a little reminder. I think there's some talk about sale hours, the licensing, where they're parked, just a few that I jotted down.
So I, I think Danielle covered most of the parking on it. It would be in those yellow areas there. It's going to be available on, you know, kind of a daily basis, you know? And I only plan on having four at the maximum in the front. Probably two is probably sufficient to, you know, attract customers. So, so I'm not planning on flooding the front parking area by any means. So.
Okay.
Okay. The test driving, I, I think there's ample room for them to, you know, for short driving and the, on the property there. Unloading, I kind of excuse my penmanship, but I have an unloading area there.
I saw.
That, that should be plenty of room. I don't expect it to take long for them to do that. It shouldn't block any traffic there. That, that alleyway is seldom used. So it's a shortcut for people to Gordon Foods, I think, for the most part. The, the other, the thing that I don't, you know, the, the license for selling golf carts. Now, these are not going to have a VIN number on the vehicle. The manufacturer is telling me that a license is not required to sell those unless their VIN is applied to them, which it can be.
Right, because they're not titled.
They're not a titled vehicle, yes.
That could, that could very well be.
We can just make a condition that if any licenses through the state are required, that they'll be sought and approved prior to.
I think that'd be a great way to do it.
And if that's what we got to do, that's what we got to do. But I just, my searches, you know, for whatever you can trust online is, is kind of confirming what I'm saying. My lawyer is also checking into it for me.
Excellent. Sounds like you're doing your homework.
Trying.
Are there any questions they have, Member Bruno?
Out of curiosity, are they going to be electric or gas?
No, electric.
Electric. And do you think the fact that you're taking them in each night, then will be like trickle chargers and electrical cords running across the parking lot to them?
I would, no, 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 not nothing outside. Some evening charges, but it's just going to be short drives. So I don't foresee them needing to be charged once, once a week or two maybe.
Member Nordhuck? Member Nordic?
Scott, the building that's labeled 48 by 26, if memory serves, that was a, what, a carpet cleaning business once upon a time?
No, that would have been in the front one, the 40 by 30.
But the four, all right, I'm sorry, I'm getting turned around. Yeah, it was a 40 by 30. And then the 91 by 40 was where the body shop was.
Correct.
So there was two businesses that was running in this location previously.
Yes, yes, at one time.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Excellent.
And no additional signage, right? I think I remember reading that staff report. Oh, additional signage is.
Well, I was hoping to at least get something up. I don't know what would be acceptable. Possibly on the, the 40 by 30 building at the front of that. I don't know of size requirements or.
I think you'd have to work with staff on the signage, because that's not part of the application in front of us right now.
Okay.
But I think administratively, they can approve it as long as it's within the window, square feet that are signed at the lot for your lot.
That is correct. Yes.
Would you be amenable to if we put that as a condition that I just, that corner is bad traffic wise? And then that, I'm going to use his term, is the so-called privacy behind you. I think it's a continuation of charlevoix. I just don't want to see golf carts zipping up and down that.
I, I really don't foresee that. You know, we're just starting out. So I mean, you know, and.
If you don't foresee it, then there shouldn't be a problem.
I mean, our mainstay is the body shop. This is just a little side thing to go. That's all it is.
I understand. All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
No, but I do have a question for staff.
Thank you. I think you're.
Okay. Member Roland?
He does have to get a license to sell these vehicles. Would that license also cover him selling cars, motorcycles, things like that? I mean, I, I guess my concern is, and maybe, do you want to close public hearing?
We haven't opened it yet.
Okay. My, I guess my concern would be, you know, today it's golf carts, tomorrow it's Toyotas. They, they had a license. I alluded to it. I think his dad used to sell cars, so they had a license for years. I don't want to speak for him, but I know that to be the case. So like this was already licensed for that as a, as a use. Not to say that it shouldn't, but.
That conversation came up when we were looking at the path forward for approval that they did previously. We couldn't determine if they had a special use to sell vehicles per section 17 of our ordinance now, but regardless, they hadn't sold them within the year and they had explained that. So we had determined that this is the right path forward. But I think to make sure your concerns are handled within our, our approval, if the planning commission is so inclined to approve, I would make sure to say that this is for golf carts, for this number of golf carts, for up to four displayed at any time. And make sure that we're clear in our in our approval or motion.
Because if you start selling cars on that corner?
Yep.
Not that you would do that. I'm just saying like.
Well, but this approval isn't for selling cars.
Yeah.
For selling golf carts.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying though. That, that was my whole purpose of the question is that today it's selling golf carts. What happens if tomorrow it's selling cars? And we've already opened the door. So that was my question.
All right. Any other questions of staff? If not, I'd take a motion to go to a public hearing. So moved. Thank you, Member Nordic. Do we have support?
Supported.
Thank you, Member Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Is there anybody in the public or on Zoom wants to raise their hand and speak to this matter?
Like make a motion that we move out of public hearing.
Thank you, Member Nordic. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, Member Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Anybody wish to take a stab at this one?
I'd like to make a motion that for case number 24-3859 that we approved with staff recommendations and that we limited to golf cart sales only. And that four carts displayed, a total of six on hand at any given time. I think that was what was in the application. I missed anything, right?
Can we add a test drive? Can we make sure it's contained?
Limit test drives to his parking lot, which I think legally he would have to. Yeah, the property.
And then can you amend recommendation number two, that if a license is required?
Yeah.
If, if it's required.
Yeah, and a license shall be provide, a proof of a license shall be obtained by the State of Michigan for the sale of golf carts only if required by the State of Michigan and provided to staff. What does the group think about cutting it from, down to a total of four, only to display two at a time? I like four.
I don't think there's a problem with four. You're starting at four. To me, it's splitting hairs.
Okay. The staff recommended it. I think it's reasonable. We'll give it a shot. Is there support for the motion?
I will support.
Thank you, Member Bruno, for the support. Member Nordic for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I believe the motion passes for five, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
You too. That brings us on to Article eight, case number 24-3863, which is Gruders Land Development, 5400 International Parkway. I believe this case has been in front of the planning commission a couple of times prior. So this should be, should be an easy one.
Yeah, I think so. It's pretty straightforward. I should note that although this is the third, I should note that although this is the third, third time that this particular project has come across the planning commission's desk, given that the zoning ordinance requires that some substantial improvement or improvements need to occur within 12 months of a prior approval or of a approval. At this point, that's lapsed now twice. It was originally approved in 2019, then subsequently in 2020, and now back in front of you in 2024. So staff at that point treated this as if this was a clean slate, brand new type of development that's, that's coming across. So we tend to kind of look at this with a little bit of a closer eye and, and maybe caught a couple of things that potentially were not discussed in the previous approvals. So just kind of note that that's where some of this stuff is kind of coming from. The applicant is Gruders Land Development LLC requesting for site plan approval to construct a 112,204 square foot facility on the currently undeveloped site located at 5400 International Parkway. The structure is intended for warehousing and distribution, which is compliant per the permitted uses in the Meadowbrook PUD ordinance. Site improvements include parking, loading, truck docks, utility hookups, and landscaping. The general location, subject site is located within a planned industrial park. Part of the Meadowbrook PUD surrounding land uses include industrial businesses. The subject site is not affected by any airport overlays. The general surrounding area of the site is industrial with office use. Parcel size is approximately seven acres in area, and the existing land use is undeveloped. It should be noted that per the case background, the last approval occurred on September 15 of 2020. At that time, there were two conditions of approval, the first of which that the applicant submit a photometric plan, which has been included as, as part of this site plan package for review again. The second of which is a stormwater management, I'm sorry, stormwater maintenance agreement submitted to the township for review and file. We did speak with the township engineer, whose comments are included on page six of, of staff report. But just note that to, to my knowledge and into our knowledge, that, that stormwater maintenance agreement has not been submitted for file. Per the zoning ordinance requirements into site plan review, section 20, 21051, with regard to basic information, it should be noted that the revision date of September 25, 2024 has been appropriately noted on site plan. So just to kind of ensure that consistency piece there, should this come back in a few years or any case filing occur at the township. Section XA of the PUD ordinance or 10A Schedule of Regulations should be noted that the proposed structure does meet all requirements for both setback and building height as required by the PUD ordinance. Section, let's see, VI, what is that for? Development Approval Procedure. So the Meadowbrook PUD, there is a Meadowbrook PUD board that, or review board that is supposed to be reviewing these applications as they come in. If you guys recall back a couple of months ago, when the Skytron development came in, it was noted at that time that that board has since dissolved and.
They reviewed this in 2019 and approved it.
Yep, and that was, I was going to say there's supplemental documentation that the township has that has already noted that approval back in 2019. So it, it is likely that, you know, they would carry forward that recommendation of approval. With regard to off-street parking loading, section 19 point D, the applicant will be required or is required to construct 75 parking spaces per calculation requirements for warehousing. The proposed, proposed number of spaces is 79 in total. The previously approved site plan included a total of 101 parking spaces, which is proposed reduction of 22 parking spaces from 29, or I'm sorry, 2020. So just, I will defer to the applicant to describe and explain the purpose and the primary reason for that reduction of those 22 parking spaces. And also note that the planning commission has the jurisdiction to require that, that flexibility there or allow that flexibility, I should say. The, the site plan also notes future, 14 future trailer parking spaces on the south side of the site. The total area is approximately 9,625 square feet in area intended for trailer parking spaces. Section XD5 of parking requirements for the P, per the PUD ordinance requires a maximum of 25% of required parking to be allowed to be reserved or banked. So that's why you see the increase of parking noted on the west side of the building as opposed to just the south side of the building. If we're comparing 2020, the 2020 approval versus the 2024 approval. I think perhaps that particular requirement may have been missed at, at the time of the 2020 approval. So that was the reason why that additional west side parking area has been included at, at this time.
Can I ask a question? I'm, I'm kind of admittedly a bit confused. It may be just me. So there's 23 on the south, kind of wall, 23 on the west wall. It's 46 out of the 75 required. That would leave 29 as deferred. But they're only allowed 25%. So they're allowed 18. So are you, are they asking?
So they are asking for 23 spaces on the south, or I'm sorry, on the west, 23 spaces on the south with a total of 46. 33 spaces are planned to be reserved. So with 79. Um, thirty-three spaces are planned to be reserved. So with seventy-nine total being requested, twenty-five percent. So let's say.
It's eighteen. So they're allowed to defer eighteen, but it seems like they're deferring. Twenty-nine.
I mean, it's very possible that the math, my math is incorrect here, which I'm not saying that that's never happened before.
Yeah, and I'm I'm. And then somewhere in the table says reserving fifty-six. I think it's just a typo. So maybe we can circle back at that, but if you could check in that, because I I think indirectly someone's asking us to waive the requirement of twenty-five percent and increase it. I'm doing the math correctly.
And to my understanding, the PUD ordinance does not allow the planning commission, the jurisdiction to waive that twenty-five percent or a a differing standard as your zoning ordinance does. So in this sense, the PUD ordinance would supersede your zoning. Um, thank you for bringing that up, though, um, and I apologize for the inaccuracy of my math, which is why I'm a planner. Um, the um, but I I should also note that that fifty-six, those fifty-six reserved spaces, that was um the previous approval of twenty twenty had fifty-six on the west side.
Now it's thirty-three, I think.
Correct.
Good.
Um, with regard to uh lighting, section four point three four nineteen nineteen of the zoning ordinance, um. We noted nothing substantial. It is uh the lighting plan or photometric plan is compliant with zoning ordinance requirements. All lights are planned to be fully shielded. Um, however, I should note that there is um a little bit of light or um exterior lighting proposed on the south side of the site where that trailer parking storage area is lo to be located. Um, I should note that there is a residential home that is located to the south of that site. Now, I did a measurement and I want to say um it was around four hundred feet or so because there is a vacated railroad right of way in between both parcels. But I just want to note that for your consideration as we move through this process that perhaps a differing standard for lighting would be appropriate here, should you find it to be that way.
Were they notified of this? By, since they were the next number of feet?
Um, no, because it's not a special land use. Um, with regard to signage, um, we did not note any particular signage at this time, but should signage be required, um, that could be approved administratively. Um, with regard to landscaping, chapter twenty of the zoning ordinance, um, it was uh determined that um the intent of the landscaping conditions of this site. Um, have not changed since twenty twenty. As staff, we found it to be likely appropriate for the proposed use. I should also note, too, that existing site conditions include um pretty thick, heavily wooded areas, both on the south and along Craft Avenue. Um, in which there are wetlands located there. Um, we have note from Eagle and twenty and now the DEQ or then the DEQ in twenty nineteen. Um, that there was approval um that occurred at that time that that Eagle or DEQ at the time said that they were not interested or I should say not concerned with the proposed development as with. Um, regard to the existing wetlands. So again, I just want to note that there is that that effort and the intention to preserve that those mature growth trees that already exist on on the site. Um. Loading and unloading, um, the loading docks are located on the south port of the site or south side of the site. There are eight loading bays um that are proposed with two overhead doors. Um, the PUD ordinance does require that uh appropriate screening be put in place for loading and unloading areas. I defer to the planning commission to uh whether or not you think that 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 loading and unloading area is sufficiently screened, again. Considering that there are residential homes located to the south of that site, but existing conditions note uh a a a healthy number of trees. Um, with regard to site circulation, um, the proposed width of the driveway is thirty feet wide. Driveways range from, there's an internal driveway that goes from International Parkway south down the site. Um, ranges from thirty feet in width to forty-six point two feet. Um, the applicant shall obtain a driveway permit. Applicant has already obtained uh permits back in twenty twenty when this was approved, but they'll they'll need to to re-up that approval from the road commission. Um, the, I sent the proposed site plan over to the fire department for review. They did not find any um or have any concerns with site circulation. Um, however, I should note that one of the pages of the site plan include a truck turning diagram. Um, it is uh observed that one of the per the truck turning diagram that it the. The intended turn of a of a uh semi-truck will encroach actually, in fact, within those fourteen trailer parking spaces. Um, and I'll just wanna, I just wanted to note that for for your uh deliberation process and perhaps the the applicant can. Um, provide further information on what they plan to do if there are fourteen trailers indeed parked in that spite uh on that um eventually, on that area eventually. And how that will look when there's uh semis that are turning in and out. Um, additionally, with that thirty-foot wide driveway on the west side of the site, um, it is not likely that both. That two semis would have enough space to pass one another on site. So again, just something to note. Um, and uh through your deliberation process, should you find that that's appropriate? As as presented.
When when you say they wouldn't be able to pass each other, where are you referring to? That drive on here shows us thirty feet wide.
Right, but if you have one coming in and one coming out. I granted, this is me doing some like minor research that. Each um. Eight point. Is my math wrong again?
Yeah, I think I think you have plenty of room there. I could drive a car between the semis.
Yeah, you're right. Oh, my goodness. All right, ignore that note. Um. Other agency approvals, um township engineer noted that the applicant should or um has to receive approval from the Kent County Drain Commission. Um, due to the regional uh detention basin located on site. Um, outdoor storage and trash removal, um, the, there is a dumpster that is planned to be located inside the facility. Um, we know that that's compliant with ordinance requirements. In the event that they move it out, they're gonna need a site plan amendment um to show where that dumpster is planned to be located. Um, further, no other outdoor storages is included on site. Um, and thus concludes the um. Details of the review. Any questions?
Those uh proposed trailer parking spots, are those those woods, are they? Full grown woods? I mean, will that will they cover the, if trailers are parked in those, I didn't, I didn't do a drive-by, sorry. Will they cover that? Will the woods cover those trailers?
The the way that it looked to me, yes, but also the leaves are still on the trees, so it's it's hard to say definitively, um, but I will, I will defer to the.
Okay.
Applicant to also explain that further, um, because they did provide information on the number that they plan to to keep and what's all coming down.
All right. Questions for staff? Um, Bruno?
I I guess I have one, and I I think I think I know the answer. You put this in here, um. The applicant has provided the following statement regarding the existing mature growth trees um along Craft Avenue, especially considering the residential homes located in the south. Um, we have added a note to the landscaping plan that basically if we have a conversation with them, they're willing to save more. Have we had that conversation?
Um.
It's in the middle of planning packet, page twenty-four.
Um, so that is a conversation that you as the planning commission will have tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And for clarity, as far as administration, this is the same PUD that. Fifty-eight, fifty-eighty-five Skytron, fifty-eighty-five Corporate Exchange was in. So there's provisions within. That PUD that allow for us, the the planning director. To work through that landscaping plan. So if you guys communicate clearly what you'd like done there, I can administratively. Administer that.
Well, I I I drove by and um I'm gonna have to zoom in now and show how legally blind I am, but um.
We've grown to love the the Bruno.
He named it.
The Bruno.
There is a eight-inch pine along um the the parkway there, International Parkway. There's a fourteen-inch pine, a fourteen-inch pine, an eight-inch pine. And I looked at like the uh city of Ann Arbor's. Penalty for taking down kind of more old growth. It's two hundred and forty-four dollars per inch in diameter. That that's some value there. And it looks like kind of outside their footprints. I'd just be very interested in keeping. The trees that are along the International Parkway, unless there's some really good reason other than just ease of bulldozing everything in one fell swoop. I appreciate they're keeping everything along craft, but can we keep anything over, anything larger than, say, eight inches in diameter? Would keeping it be be a huge undertaking? And if not, I would, I would vote to keep those, maybe have a conversation with them.
Okay, good question for him. Anybody else have questions, the staff?
No, just I think that the. Person who owns the home should have been notified regardless. Just would have been a nice thing to do to notify the president.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Um. With that, would the applicant wish to come up and make any comments? Anything to add? Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Justin Longstrath with Moore and Brujink Engineers, representing the applicant tonight. Breaking my own record for most hopeful approvals of a plan uh tonight, but um by and large, the plan that you see in front of you is. The same as what was in front of the planning commission twice before. We talked a little bit about the parking. The parking on the west side is probably the biggest change from before till now. Uh, what's gonna end up happening here is it's gonna be a warehousing user. Where there's going to be somewhere between five and ten employees that occupy this building. So by and large. Majority of the parking spaces constructed on site will never be used. Um, but if we need to build them, we will build them. Uh, but. Largely, I I would suspect that you'll have a handful of employees that park on the south side and that's it.
Is is now a good time for you to comment on the? Which math is correct? So there's, you're planning forty-six, is that correct?
Forty-six. Um, I think that we were going off of Danielle's math when we put, so we just.
That's dangerous.
We just did that. So if the math comes out to be something different, then that we'll do what we need to do.
Okay.
Um, so we were just kind of going off of what staff's recommendation was, but. Uh, I would guess that there isn't much or at all any cars that are parked on that west side. So no matter what we build, it's gonna probably sit vacant. But it is what it is.
It is unfortunate. All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Member Bruno?
Same question again. So as I understand it, I looked at your um kind of before and after um the 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 survey showing all the trees along craft. It looks like you're keeping every single one of them, from what I can tell. Every one of them appears in the the after development. Would you be amenable to keeping, like you put the statement in there that you can't keep those and and obviously plant all the plantings we require? I would much rather keep a mature tree than than put a, you know, three-inch sampling.
If if there's flexibility in that, I think that we would love to keep those trees up front if there could be a reduction in the proposed trees that we put in. And I don't know what the math equates to.
Those count towards your tree calculation.
Okay, so yeah.
We'll work on if, I mean, if you guys just condition that they meet the requirements, I'll work with you on counting trees.
We can keep them mature tree and reduce the burden of it. It must also fit for everybody.
The fourteen trailer spaces, I mean, you guys are saving those in reserve for later. What, why or? Why later? Why not doing it at the end?
Sure, it's really tenant-driven. Um, some tenants value trailer storage spaces, others don't.
Okay.
Um, so before we spend the money and effort to put them in without knowing if they're gonna be used, we'll just. Present them um.
So they may not be used.
They they may never be built. They may never be built, correct.
Then on that top, answering your question earlier, I don't believe there's any trees around where that fourteen trucking spot.
It's it's, it does, it shows up here that there's, I I mean, it says. It says shrubs. I can't, I've. It, I did, I looked at it and on one, on one of the plans or multiple of the plans, it does. They call it, hold on a second. Hold up.
I think if you look at the aerial picture, majority of the existing vegetation is within that old railroad right of way.
It says woods.
Right, but what he's saying, it's along the, it's not like screening directly around the the semis themselves.
Yeah, I don't, the wood.
And would they need to? Do they have to screen semis if it becomes a semi parking lot?
Um, per the PUD ordinance, there is a requirement for screening for any activity for pertaining to loading and unloading. Um, so I would say yes, in that sense. Um, but the screening, I think, you know, that's up to the planning commission, whether or not you find that the conditions are appropriate.
All right. I think we're good with you. Thank you.
Yep.
Any discussion or action on this item?
I don't know if I like the fact that we reduced the parking spaces so much from the last one. I mean, if it was approved with those parking spaces on the last one.
No, it was approved with less parking.
Always last parking spaces.
Oh, they removed parking spaces from this. Okay, I like.
That's what I thought, but that's, but the parking was really confusing when I was reading through it. So there was more parking in the original approval, and now this one they're asking for less parking.
Well, yes and no. There was more theoretical parking in the initial. But more of it was deferred. So actual parking that will be built is less now than before and even less than the PUD requires, I believe.
Per this request. The actual built spaces will be more. For the fact of that twenty-five percent deferred maximum, which was not applied at the twenty twenty or during the twenty twenty approval. I think at which point the applicant, um, I know it was a total of a hundred and one spaces, but I can pull up exactly what it was. At the time that was planning to be both paved and deferred.
We seem to have a history sitting up here of applicants coming in and saying. We can build that parking, but it'll never be used. We've had a lot, lot of people come in front of us last few years, particularly, you know, post-COVID. Industrial saying, we don't have that many employees, your numbers are out of date. And I think that's something we should keep in mind because it doesn't make sense to pave. Acres of land over, or I guess in this case, square feet of land over uh. For parking that is never going to be used. I mean, that doesn't. That's, it's not a good practice.
So good thing we're changing our zoning ordinance, right? Now's the time we can fix that.
And we're implementing BSNA, so we can put reminders in BSNA to go check on parking.
I I understand, but I'm just, I guess I'm bringing it up now because we have an application in front of us and. You know, obviously they have deferred parking. If they need the parking later, they'll build it.
So so can we? So can we, like?
My concern is, again, I I don't, I don't just look at today, right? Look at tomorrow too, and what happens if the people that are renting the space. Ten years from now, the business changes and now there's multiple businesses in there. They need multiple entry points, they need multiple parking. Okay, now they've got a.
They have to build the deferred parking then. That's why it's already approved.
So just for context, we have an application right now. That is an administrative site plan review just for change of use, and that's exactly why we're looking at. The change of use to accommodate, to to ensure that the new use is. Appropriately parked and that the exterior of their property meets what's going on inside. So we have a process to make sure that as uses change, that they still meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Good.
Then let's get back to the issue of the twenty-five percent deferred. That's really thirty-five percent deferred.
It sounds like I have no legal room according to Danielle, so I'm looking back. I don't think there's any debate. That's a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and four square feet. It's been on that document in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-four. So the square footage seems rather fixed. She's saying per thousand square feet, they need point six seven parking spaces. The math checks out seventy-five. I'm looking at the drawing. I can see twenty-three along the south wall. And a clump of eleven and twelve. I can see twenty-three along the west wall. Twenty-three and twenty-three is forty-six, seventy-five minus forty-six is twenty-nine.
That's where I got. Total.
And twenty-nine is certainly greater than. Eighteen, seventy-five, who does replace one to the left, seven point five doubled is fifteen, that's twenty percent, three point seven five on fifteen is eighteen point seven five around on eighteen. Twenty-nine is greater than eighteen, so they need to come up with eleven parking places.
Deferred or actual?
Actual if by. Essentially, PewDie statute, we're not allowed to change the twenty-five percent.
Or they needed to, I mean, if that if that's where you're going. I I don't always want to get in the habit of just saying, like, how do we shove more into the site? The question is, is the size of the building appropriate for the size of the site? Or do they need to decrease the size of their building if they can't accommodate all the elements that are required for that building? Sorry, Justin, I know we don't want to hear.
Like to add something?
So it it's very, very easy, and I don't have a laser pointer. Um. But if there's more parking required, all we're gonna do is build more of the parking. That's that's reserved. That that's it. So it's very, we're not needing to reduce. A building size. We're just taking and building more parking that's reserved and that's it. So whatever that number ends up being, if it's another eleven, no problem.
Yeah, you're right. That's why it's reserved.
We just flip it over on the other side of the drive aisle. We're done. So if we can work with staff on that, then I think we're good.
Well, but then the more reasonable question is, is this is this too big of a can of worms? I agree with you. I I I like permeable surfaces. How hard is it to? Modify the PUD and reduce that or increase the twenty-five percent? Is that a huge undertaking?
I don't think a sub motion tonight will do that. If that's what you're asking.
If you want to amend the PUD, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Huge undertaking.
I mean, they, that would have to be noticed and. And have a whole bunch of stuff.
I I think that's what should happen, but as far as.
It seems like we oftentimes talk about what should happen, but we don't do it.
But that's a conversation that needs to happen, not with an applicant in front of us. We need to handle. But that's a conversation that needs to happen, not with an applicant in front of us. We need to handle this case right now.
That's, that's article eleven. So with that in mind.
Does anybody wish to take a stab at this?
I guess I will.
Thank you, Member Bruno.
Yeah, I guess give me, you gotta buy me a second here to find that page.
That's fine.
I got the case number here.
Twenty four thirty eight sixty three.
For case number twenty four dash thirty eight sixty three, I would recommend approval, provided they allocate eleven of their reserved spaces to be standard, bringing it to a total of fifty seven. Along with the planning staff's recommendation of the applicant obtaining permits from the Kent County Drain Commission, the Kent County Road Commission, the Kent Cascade Township Building Department.
Thank you for the motion, Member Bruno. Do we have support? Thank you, Member Roland. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much. I actually heard this case all three times it came in, which is pretty rare. Twice his vice chair and once his chair.
And now that betting is legal in Michigan, should we have like an overrun? Like, should we have some, will you be back again?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It was my birthday, the first time it came in front of us. Now, Member Spurlet.
But I didn't, I forgot the, no one reminded.
All right. With that, I'd like to acknowledge.
You approve that landscaping plan. We can modify it administratively, so we'll take care of it. And again, those.
So we're case twenty four thirty eight sixty four. Or zoning ordinance amendment or compatible renewable energy ordinance. This sounds really exciting, by the way. Creo.
But don't tell it to Mike Homier because he doesn't like that term.
I think he's on the line. Mike is on the lines. Can you, can you promote Mike to be able to speak if he needs to? I'm gonna introduce it here, but Mike Homier from our office on as well. Creo sounds too much like, I don't know, Oreo. It just has two, yeah, anyway. Now you're hungry for Oreos. Bring those next time. I thought I'd give a little bit of background on P A two thirty three and in case anyone on the planning commission or the vast public we have present, we're not familiar with it, but Governor Whitmer signed House Bills fifty one, twenty and twenty one last year, which are collectively P A two thirty three of twenty twenty three. Although it was signed last year, it takes effect November twenty ninth of this year. The net effect of this legislation is to greatly diminish local control over zoning for wind, solar and battery energy storage facilities. And the gist of it is that the statute takes away local zoning authority to regulate these alternative or renewable energy projects unless the municipality adopts a compatible renewable energy ordinance, hence the abbreviation Creo, that is no more restrictive than the statute standards. And those standards in the statute are fairly permissive and were ultimately put in the legislation at industry directives. So they're more industry friendly, we would say, than what many zoning ordinances out there were like prior to P A two thirty three. If a municipality does not have a compatible ordinance, then the developer can skip over the township altogether and go straight to the Michigan Public Service Commission for approval of the project. Although that process involves some community input, there is a public meeting. It does not require compliance with local zoning or citing requirements. And really, there's a public meeting, but the municipality doesn't actually get to decide anything. The decision is made then at the Public Service Commission level. The statute applies not to all wind, solar and battery storage, but just to those of a certain size, what we'd consider more utility scale or commercial size. Specifically, it's wind projects with a nameplate capacity of a hundred megawatts or more, solar energy projects with a nameplate capacity of fifty megawatts or more, and battery energy storage projects with a nameplate capacity of fifty megawatts or more and a discharge capability of two hundred megawatt hours or more. So what we've got before the township today are two of the three types of ordinances. There's really not enough space in the township to put wind towers, so we don't see a need really to regulate that. You're not going to have a wind developer want to put turbines, because there's just not enough open space in Cascade Township as it's developed. But you have a solar ordinance and a battery energy storage ordinance. And I want to talk about how they're structured, big picture, before we go into the details. Because if you first read them, you might think, what, why are there different standards here? What are all these different requirements? Prior to this, the township did not have any solar regulations for for utility scale or otherwise, or battery energy storage facilities on the books. And to be frank, nobody had battery storage regulations on the books because it's a very new land use. So these ordinances first, in the first part of them, put into place some basic regulations. You're looking at me like, was there, sorry.
I don't want to interrupt you. Back to the structuring, you mentioned that no one would look at a commercial scale solar, but I noticed most of these ordinance are written, kind of the first half is kind of not necessarily utility scale than the utility scale. Do we have a non-utility scale wind?
I don't know if you have a non, I don't think you have a non-utility scale wind.
Any electric, we don't handle any renewable energy of any kind zoning. We we haven't had any requests that I know of for windmills for any, but we have had requests for solar and we handle it.
Can I put that out there in the sandbox? Then that's something we should have for non-utility scale. Because I can see Meyer coming saying they want to mount them on the edge of their roof, because a lot of Meyer facilities currently have them.
Sure. And so those would not be subject to P A two thirty three, so we're not on the same time constraints as we are. But I I agree, you could certainly have those. I guess what I meant was you're not going to have room for a big.
No, I'm totally with you. That's why I didn't interrupt you. I was just asking. Do we currently have a wind somewhere?
Just wanted to make sure I caught a question there in progress if we needed to. You'll see for solar that the draft ordinance does have some regulations for private solar energy systems. So those are more, hey, you want solar panels to generate electricity for your house. But the first part are sort of general regulations. And you'll note in the first part, those are actually not compatible renewable energy provisions. They are more restrictive and I'm gonna explain how that comes into play. Because those again are sort of the default that would apply to any systems that don't meet the size requirement, even if it's more than just a private residence or a small, a smaller solar energy system or a smaller battery energy storage system. These would be the provisions that are, would say, more restrictive than the P A two thirty three requirements. What it then does at the end of each, and they're sort of in parallel similar structures, after it goes through all of those substantive regulations, you'll see at the end of each a section that refers to P A two thirty three. So for solar, it's subsection D, commercial solar energy systems under P A two thirty three. So this is the important part and the Creo part, if we're going to use that abbreviation. It reads for the solar, on or after November twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, once P A two thirty three of twenty twenty three is in effect, the following provisions apply to commercial solar energy systems with a nameplate capacity of fifty megawatts or more. Remember, that was the threshold for P A two thirty three. To the extent these provisions conflict with the provisions in subsection C above, which was the general commercial solar energy systems regulations, the provisions below control as to such commercial solar energy systems. So it's saying, hey, these other requirements down here that are below, which are the same as P A two thirty three, are going to take precedence and be the ones that apply to these systems that are subject to P A two thirty three. All provisions in subsection C above that do not conflict with this subsection remain in full force and effect. This subsection does not apply if P A two thirty three of twenty twenty three is repealed, enjoined or otherwise not in effect and does not apply to commercial solar energy systems with a nameplate capacity of less than fifty megawatts, because again, those are not subject to P A two thirty three. The regulations that follow there are identical to those in P A two thirty three. The items that are required to be regulated in this way to be considered a compatible renewable energy ordinance with the addition of a mirrored community agreement for which the developer pays the township two thousand dollars per megawatt, which is something you would get at the M P S C level as well. So we kind of call, at least without our office, you won't hear it anywhere else, call that kind of a trigger provision where you have an ordinance, but if it's a P A two thirty three facility, this part is triggered and comes into effect. Now, items that are not, yes.
So are you saying that when that's triggered, you believe even though we say the provisions below that aren't more loose, the above control, such as like the overlay, isn't the overlay not compatible?
So this great question, this P A two thirty three does not regulate the sighting location. The statute is silent on that. And there's a Michigan Supreme Court case from a couple of years ago in the marijuana context, Ryder versus Byron Township, where the Supreme Court said, if a statute is silent on some areas of regulation, the municipality still has control to regulate those items. So the statute is also silent on things like insurance requirements. To require that the operator of a utility scale solar system have insurance is not in conflict with what P A two thirty three requires. P P two thirty three says to have a compatible renewable energy ordinance, you must have these items. And those are for solar setbacks, fencing, height, noise, lighting, you know, environmental regulations. The end.
Then my second part is, I know, so I'm trying to figure out how to describe this. So with with a Creo, we are basically, from from my point of view, what I've read, saying we want to be first in line to have one of these facilities. Because we're basically, so let me finish, because because we're basically saying that our minimum threshold is P A two thirty three. What I've read is that we would much likely, would we would much prefer, it's it's the, it's the kind of give and take. We would prefer to have something one degree, maybe two degree, maybe three degrees of freedom away from a Creo, so that we still have an opportunity to sit at the table. But the advantage, even though it's not compatible, so we want incompatible, but very little incompatibility, so they prefer to work with us rather than the state. And that way there, we have a seat at the table and we can get something out of it. Does that make sense?
Are you, are you looking for the word workable ordinance?
I'm all, that's exactly what it's called.
Yes. Well, I will say that's what it is called by people who are giving presentations about it. You won't find that word anywhere in the statute or the regulations. It's not a concept created by the law. It's incompatible in that case. What it is is saying if you have a specific developer who is here, who says, I can't make enough money with your ordinance, I'm willing to let you have an incompatible ordinance as long as it still gives me the developer what I want to make money. That's not a compatible renewable energy ordinance, and that's not covered by the statute. Developers always have the option to work with the municipality that does have an incompatible ordinance. The thing is, you really, first of all, workable ordinance does not have a definition beyond whatever a specific developer wants in order to make money. There's no, you can't have a model workable ordinance. And I think, you know, even, you know, groups like, you know, MSU and U of M have different people that go around talking about this and we don't always agree with their take on it. Even they will say in their materials, there's risk there, right? If you have an ordinance that is not compatible, but you believe it's workable, they can still skip you and go to the M P S C.
Agree with everything you said, but my question, except for the last thing, there's still risk there. There's really no risk because if they, if they go to the M P S C, the M P S C is essentially our ordinance anyway, as written.
So the MP, well, not if it's workable. I mean, you just said if you have a workable ordinance, it's something that's incompatible, right? Or you're saying compared to this. Here's the difference with what you have before you. This still has gap fillers in it, things that are not covered by P A two thirty three. So you are still protected with things like the decommissioning bond, the insurance, other things that the statute doesn't cover. So it is still protecting you in a way that the M P S C is not going to look at.
Okay, so you, so there is risk, you're saying.
Correct. That was actually very helpful. I mean, that really got to a lot of, a lot of the content, so that's. I I take, I take no offense to those questions. I think they're important questions to address because there is a lot of information out there. Frankly, not all of it's accurate that's out there. Our firm's been working on this since, you know, the day the law went in, you know, the law was signed last year and put a lot of hours on my old Chevy out there to get to different places in the state to talk to communities about this. But the two ordinances are set up to offer those additional protections while still being a compatible renewable energy ordinance. To your point, Member Bruno, you really can't do a workable ordinance unless you have a specific developer here anyway. So you couldn't say, I'd rather do a workable ordinance. Well, you don't, you don't have somebody necessarily right here. And if you did, then I think you would have the policy question of, do we want to give up our protections to make sure they can make more money in the township? You know, that's kind of what a workable ordinance comes down to. So that's not our recommendation. Our recommendation is to adopt ordinances that are compatible renewable energy ordinances that still fill the gaps with measures that protect the township. And so those are the two ordinances you have before you, one for solar and one for battery. And battery, like I said, very structured, very similarly, it has substantive regulations, followed by that trigger provision as section four for those P A two thirty three systems. Yes.
If we were to recommend this to the township board, there's nothing to suggest that we could not amend it later. Is that?
That's correct.
Are you done? A few of the definite, as I understand it, these definitions will go just to kind of the front part of the zoning ordinance as as a definition period. It's not a definition in the energy section, correct? It's just a broad based definition.
Three, which are general definitions.
Exactly. So like abandonment. So I don't know what page I'm on here.
At fifty five?
Page fifty two, like abandonment, it's very energy specific. So I don't know if we need to define abandonment in other contexts. But if abandonment is going to be in just in the the chapter three, it immediately I'm saying to a solar energy is abandoned if it has been, well, what what defines abandonment for a golf cart dealership or whatever? So that one gives me a little pause that it's it's context sensitive.
I would just say, Member Bruno, it does say abandonment, a solar energy system is abandoned. I get what you're saying. If there are a way to segregate those in the definitions, that's kind of a editorial change, we could likely, or organizational change that could likely be done in codification.
Okay. And then on a couple of the other ones, a little bit more kind of, I guess, somewhat nitpicky, but I think it's important on 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 this, especially what we're trying to regulate here. We have in the definition, so we have utility, so in in like, again, page forty five, we have utility scale battery energy storage facility. Not, I'm just wondering, should we, should we, should utility scale be its own definition? Because putting it all together, I have one of those at my house and I don't think that's the intent.
No, that's the language that mirrors exactly what P A thirty three amendments.
Are you looking at solar or battery? I'm sorry.
I'm on battery.
Okay.
So it's one or more devices assembled together capable of storing energy in order to supply electrical energy.
And actually, I'll, I'll, I might actually disagree with you, Andrew. I think the statute's actually even broader. The statutory language basically would probably, you know, include a double A battery. But this is the language. But this, but the language we put in this ordinance is similar to what communities all across the country and the American Planning Association have used for just defining these types of facilities.
Couldn't we define it with a size, though?
No.
No.
No. And the reason why is somebody could consider themselves to have a commercial or utility scale and have a nameplate capacity of forty eight megawatt hours, and then they're not subject to P A two thirty three. So we still want to define under that last section only those that are subject to P A two thirty three.
Okay.
So you could have something that's big, but not big enough to be P A two thirty three.
Similarly, do we want to take? One of the biggest things now is basically to think of a a high rise in downtown where the elevator shafts aren't moving people, they're moving solid masses. So as as the, as the sun shine on the solar arrays, they're lifting giant weights up into the air and entire high rises, high weights, and then when they need energy, they, it's potential energy storage as opposed to a battery. Should we abstract? Because batteries are not the future, not even five years out, really, the the where the industry is going to store energy. Are we pigeonholing ourselves too much here?
We have to regulate battery energy storage facilities in the sense that if we don't and somebody approaches the township to put in one that's subject to P A two thirty three, then we forfeit at all of our control and regulations.
But does it have to be battery or just to be energy storage? Like, does the word battery have to be there's my question.
Yeah, so they're effectively the same. Some say battery, it says energy. I don't think there's a meaningful difference there.
I do, yeah, with that, I do hear what you're saying now, because the same thing with pump storage or something. That is not necessarily a battery.
Right.
I I think it's something to be noted and we can clarify if it's recommended. I I think it's something to be noted and and we can clarify if it's recommended.
And then if, and then one last one, nitpicking, and then I'll also end with my nitpicking. Another kind of weird one is now I'm going back to solar to A. So um, roof mounted makes sense. It can't be taller than the peak. So you just slide it down the roof, so it's not tall in the peak, but it says um.
Are you under the private or commercial solar systems, please?
I'm under private solar systems, page packet, page fifty-four, two A.
Okay, no part of the solar energy system erected on a roof, that part?
That part's good. But then the second one is basically if it's mounted on a wall, no portion of it can extend beyond the wall. Inherently has to extend past the wall, otherwise you're not mounting it on a wall.
Wait, that's not the language I'm seeing. No part of the um, the version that I pulled off the website is different than that, so. I have the ten seven twenty twenty-four planning commission packet PDF, but I'm on packet page forty-seven, the same as you, Andrea.
Fifty-two and it has items nine through fifteen.
So packet page fifty-four.
Okay, let me scroll down. Maybe we're not, maybe you're under commercial.
Okay, so it starts with item B.
Private solar energy system supposedly. It says in red at the bottom, packet page fifty-four.
Yeah, mine says packet page fifty-four, but it's it's actually section D, commercial solar energy systems. Items B through G.
Yeah, say a packet number, packet page fifty-four has the P A two thirty-three parts on mine. It starts with subsection B fencing at the top.
You you have, you're working off a different packet, it would appear.
Possible.
Well, because you're giving us a link and you can change, you you need to attach the file. We talked about this before, don't send us a link because where that link ends up can be something different for everybody. If you overwrite that file.
Okay, let's figure out where we're at regardless.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Um, it's not my fault. Section seventeen oh seven, solar energy systems. B is private solar energy systems.
Correct.
Point two is roof or building mounted.
Yes.
Point A, no part of the solar energy system erected on the roof is permitted to extend beyond the peak of the roof. Fine, perfect, I can visualize that. If the solar energy system is mounted on a building in an area other than roof, no part of the solar energy system is permitted to extend beyond the wall which is mounted. And not have it extend.
The mount, it can't extend past the end of the wall.
So it can't hang off the wall.
Right.
So if the wall is from here to here, it's mounted here, but it can't be like this. It has to be here.
Right, you're saying it has to be
Like that.
Over the wall, not I see what you're saying. You're saying this sign is protruding out from the wall.
This is what she's saying.
Extend beyond the wall.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, whoo, sorry about that.
Yes, member Richard.
I suppose about this, earlier on in the draft overview, it mentions um, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding this, but it says, you know, the land area required to produce uh, a hundred kilowatts or more of wind energy is larger than the available undeveloped land in the township. So we're just gonna kind of skip over that part. But, I mean, I think it's reasonable to think that in the future it won't take eighty acres for one wind turbine, maybe it'll take forty or twenty, or maybe even the airport will decide to move. And then that will be a bunch of like free land. I mean, we don't know what will happen in fifty years. I mean, we have had airports moved before. I mean, Roger B. Chafee was an airport at one point. So, I don't uh, think that we necessarily should just skip over that wind energy part.
So what I would say is it's not now or never. It's not like you can't adopt it after November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. We want to have the ones in place where we think there's really a realistic feasible possibility that someone would propose it. We don't see that per wind. If technology is changing or the airport goes away, or you know, something dramatic changes where you think, ooh, gosh, you know, you could put wind out here, then you adopt an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Similarly, I ran out of time, but you were talking about U of M and Michigan State have their theories and there's the gem, which is geographical something, something, I mean, you probably know more than me. But they they create a map and they say where there's a high probability, the the you're you're near a substation, you're near the utility lines, you get X number of non-sunny or non-cloudy days. Does anywhere in our township even light up as a really good opportunity? We're 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 marching towards this and I hear this, we gotta get this done by November twenty-ninth. Are we really even much of a target? Has anybody looked at the the photovoltaic tilted map and says, these are the hotspots?
That detail because I don't think it's necessary to accomplish the goal of what we're trying to do.
Say what we're trying to do is get something on the books because the township is naked right now.
Yeah, because if we don't, then the state takes over and we have no say. And like Chris said, we can amend it, right? So that's why I think, like, get it on the books. Let's then we put this on our radar to review it, go through it, put some teeth in it.
Yeah, we certainly go to communities where the developers are attending every single meeting with crowds of supporters where they already have leases in place. You know they're, you know, you, you know that, you know, that the level there. Certainly, that's not the current case, but we don't want to leave the township vulnerable when it's fairly straightforward to protect you.
Yeah, well, if we, it seems like we're all agreeing to that.
It's better than nothing and we ache to work in progress.
So I would entertain a motion to go to a public hearing.
I'd make a motion to go to public hearing.
Thank you, member Nordic. Thank you, member Bruno, for the support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Anybody wishes to comment about this on Zoom, raise your hand. Seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, member Nordic, for, thank you for the support, member Bruno. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. This time, I would entertain conversation or motion on this case.
I agree with you. I just think, let's get it on the books and then let's, like we do with the the
I I I I kind of agree with that.
Yeah.
With the exception of, because someone else's definitions are bad, ours should be too. Like, I don't like the thought that I have a utility scale battery at my house.
Can I make a suggestion here? Okay, because of the time sensitiveness here, I think the correct action would be, and I'm looking kind of towards council here too, to not, would be for us to put something on the box. All of us can review this a little bit more digest it for a few more days. Send our comments in a short email to staff and they can work directly with council to come back with definition amendments or what other concerns we have raised. They can bring it back in front of us at a later date so that we can amend it if it needs be.
You know how we reviewed the master plan? Like, we could do that to get it on the books and then put it on our docket to review it, go through it, dissect it, line item it, really just, you know.
You know, and we can bring it up at the next meeting or the meeting after that, under any other business and say, hey, where are we at with this? We think an email with these concerns.
And sometime in December would be great.
And you guys like, we are
You're assuming.
We're amending our ordinance anyways. So we're pretty much taking exactly what we do here and slopping it into Danielle's hands for the ordinance. And we can continue to to have a working relationship with legal counsel as we do to make any modifications during that process.
Would you have still said that if Danielle was sitting next to you?
So devil's advocate, if someone right now has just invested, what cost is forty thousand dollars on a roof-mounted solar city compliments of Elon Musk and they have a battery storage on the side of their garage, are they legal non-conforming?
Well, it's not permitted in the township right now, so no. Right?
It's permitted in the township. I know someone who lives in the township who got his building permit and they have a battery storage facility with a solar array on their roof. I don't know how they got a permit, but.
You don't have regulations for solar panels on roofs right now.
Cause you you had to get, had to get a building permit, you have to run wires and cables.
Right, what she's saying is there is no regulation.
Right.
Currently, but I was pass this, that's my question. But when we pass this, we will, well, if if we recommend it to the board and the board adopts it, we now have a regulation in place. And per the wording of this, my question is, for those people who have a solar array roof mounted, that they pulled a boat building permit and the building inspector came out and okayed it, what status are they?
You would have, we'd have to look at that on a case by case basis. Zoning is permissive and not prohibitory, meaning things are only allowed if they're permitted. It's not like you have to have, everything is allowed until it's prohibited. So I don't know those specific cases. There might be, you know, defenses available or discussions, but I don't think I can make a broad statement.
That's fair, that's fair. I I I know even less, okay.
When I'm looking at how they're permitted, just kind of looking at past cases, it's been handled as an accessory structure. That's how solar panels, I don't, I have not seen any battery storage in any previous approvals. But the previous approvals for solar panels in the township that I've seen have been permitted as accessory structures.
In that case, now that this kind of an event diagram overlaps, that would still hold true? Or does this supersede that?
Again, I think we'd have to look at what those are and what was approved.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion in case number twenty-four, three, eight, six, four, that we approve and recommend to the board that they adopt the uh, whatever it is.
Could we be just a little more specific?
Please put that in the minutes.
Case number twenty-four, thirty.
Thirty-eight, sixty-four, I make a recommendation uh, that we uh, recommend to the township board that they approve the zoning ordinance amendments for the compatible renewable energy ordinance as stated in our packet.
Thank you, member Nordic. Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, member Roland, for the support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Noted.
Blind sighted, you know, you didn't see that coming.
Article ten, oh, I expected it. He just acknowledged visitors and those wishing to speak. Do we have any additional visitors?
They like my opposition. We we need a pin for these computers?
What?
I think you can just click on this space.
Not anymore, you know, we're at the end of the meeting.
Oh, you might have the
From the general public regarding anything they wish to talk about? Hearing none, I would move on to any other business. It seems to me, we probably should certainly, we need to address the parking thing, cause it comes up about every other meeting. And if if it's something we need to do outside of the, you know, before the ordinance, then maybe that's what we need to do, but I'm just throwing a shot across the bow that that seems to be taking a lot of our time on Monday nights, if you know what I mean. See, I mean, wouldn't you guys agree? You spent a lot of time talking about it.
It definitely seems like the original intent was to make sure that people weren't just, you know, building things where people were gonna have to park out on the street because there wasn't ample parking, and now it's a different situation.
It's the opposite.
And we don't want to force people to create parking spaces that are
Not needed.
And doing your analogy, out forty years, it's gonna be less and less and less required.
Exactly, exactly.
So I have three things.
Yes.
Number one, I think it would be good in the future, regardless, to have um, residents notified when this uh, I I know there wasn't a big change, I know it was already approved, but there is a house that's close to this. I think it would be uh, beho- behoove of us, the township, to notify a resident and say, hey, this is coming up for hearing. It's like we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, other businesses, but this is a homeowner. I think we just, I think they all that.
There is, you know, there's a minimum requirement of noticing per the zoning enable and act for three hundred feet. However, if we find that when we're working on the administrative process in our zoning ordinance, that we want to put a requirement that all residential located within three hundred or five hundred feet of a commercial or industrial building be noticed, we can add that as, you know, an additional requirement and then.
I think you're
Are you, are you? And why did this one qualify? Because that is just night, just enough wide enough that it doesn't reach.
It's a site plan review and site plan reviews don't require public notice. So a special use and of ordinance amendment, some of those issues would then require, you know, rezoning, those would require, those would meet the requirements for a public hearing. So we can then look at that, yeah. So maybe industrial site plan reviews within any, you know, three hundred dis uh, three hundred foot distance from residential should be noticed. Um, those would be some of the conversations we'd want to have. So we'll address that in our administrative processes and bring it to you. For review.
Second thing, have we had any complaints or feedback from uh, the township residents on wormies?
Not since I've been here.
When is there a review coming up?
I don't know what you're talking about. What do you mean, they're, do they have an annual review?
Yearly review?
Yeah.
Notices are the one of the requirements?
Yes.
So we put a land use requirement that has
For the first couple of years.
First off, we we approved them to take action within a year, I believe, right?
Do you know the
I don't know if they have built out yet or not, but they needed to do that in a certain amount of time. And then I don't know if it was this, after the second year or the first year of operation, they were supposed to come in for kind of like a a little touch base, little
Okay.
Little review session with us. Uh, having no complaints is great, cause then it's, it's, you know, probably nothing more than formality, but uh
They're definitely still in business. They were at the Ada Beer Festival.
Were they?
Selling their, like they've been every year, so they're, they they look to be still around.
But was that, that was approved like twenty twenty-three, right?
Yeah, June.
Okay.
Probably should look at that one and make sure it's on the calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
At least touch base with them, because if if they have not done anything, I'd hate to have to see them come back in as, as Gruders did. Goes out.
To get their grant from the state. So I think they moved quickly, otherwise they lost their money.
I think he was rushing because his worms were dying.
Yeah, that too.
I missed all that fun.
It was good, it was good.
Yeah, good learning experience.
And then the last item is, um, I need you to check into the Watermark cigar bar approval. It was my understanding that with that approval, they had an outside deck that was attached to the cigar bar, but they were not allowed to smoke out there.
Yeah.
Oh, I know they've been smoking out there, cause I go to Watermark all the time, so I just, I
Smoking out there with him.
Anybody has a photo of
It's a huge, like, I don't know, fifteen foot cement walls surrounding, but but, I mean, I just, and and again, it's
Yep.
That was the requirement.
Yep.
And I don't think that Watermark's breaking the rules. I think their staff just doesn't know and they probably just need to be reminded like, hey, can't do that.
Remember, yep, thank you, that's helpful. And and so you guys know administratively, we're almost through kind of entering all of twenty twenty-four into B S N A. And we're working our way backwards to twenty twenty-three, which is really helping us to to get a feel for the previous approvals, and it's helping, you know, Nick and I as new staff to have to go sift through all these documents and make sure they're there and learn. It's a fun process. You guys are very fun, interesting planning.
See, so so as long as your status is, any, I I guess I should strike out there, do have we, do we have any build vaults at the new cemetery by
That one, I, yeah, go ahead.
Well, that was, that's the, that was the
Almost drove past it last week.
But Muslim one.
And drive down there.
So, so we don't know if
I don't know, because they don't require a building permit and that is one of the files. We actually picked that one up today and it's like this. So we're like, oh, we gotta clean this one up.
So, so how does that work? If they don't, they don't have to build anything? If they don't fill a crypt or a a a, within one year, they have to come back? Like, how does that work?
Good question. Yeah. But if they haven't done anything in a year, I assume, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I Is, does a cemetery have to do something within a year per their land use approval? I don't know, we'll look into that. Um, but one, may I, um, did you guys have any other question?
I had three uh, things I wanted to
Yes, member Richardson.
Um, thank you. So, I think we talked about potentially having like an additional pathway along Sixtieth, and I'm not following closely like what parks and pathways are up to, but if you drive along there, at any point when Gavin Port decides it's time to practice our cross-country in the middle of the road, it'd be nice if they were on the side of the road.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think, and then also, since I'm already talking about Sixtieth, where Thornapple has a right turn lane that's kind of sort of curves into Sixtieth, but then also has a stop at Sixtieth. It seems like most of the traffic there is curving to the right. So, it seems like we would want to make that curve like make, it it seems like you would want the people on Sixtieth heading westward to have the stop sign and have the curve be continuous, kind of sort of like a smaller scale version of like
The thing to do would be to bring that concern to the Kent County Road Commission, because that's their jurisdiction, not township's jurisdiction.
And then I also wondered, like, did anyone actually check into the previous um, Forest Hills administration building? I know there were rumors that Previous, um, Forest Hills administration building. I know there were rumors that had, had been sold or that. It was about to be for sale, but I'm not sure that we actually checked as a township, because I know that there are a lot of people interested.
It's being worked on.
Okay.
Any other, uh?
Have any more detail on that?
Okay, I mean.
Glad to take a motion to adjourn.
May I say one more thing? I just.
Yes.
Guys know what's coming. For next week, we have twenty, this is a, a private roads, um. Request that has to come to the board or to the planning commission and then to the board for an exemption. Um, that's gonna be a quick, simple one, I think. Um, but then we'll be handling. Four of the chapters from the zoning ordinance, kind of hot topics. Daniel will be here two weeks from now. And also you're gonna be very excited about this. Round Hill is coming back to the planning commission.
Oh, lovely. Maybe we split some railings on our retaining walls.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
You'll be. I'll, I'll be. Doing a lot of, I read a lot. Like I said, we've done a lot of lease.
When do you think that'll be? Would that be like January or February?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Well, it'll also have to go back to.
On the board that has any history.
Oh.
And we'll be thankful that you're here to, to endure, I mean, go, uh.
Ryan's gonna be the chair, so he'll make sure everything runs smooth. Secretary.
With that, unless someone else has comments, I would, I would take a motion to adjourn at this time, so moved. Thank you, member Nordic. Is there support?
Support.
For all those in favor, say aye. Aye.